Are there any additions or modifications to be made?
I have one item, it's under information. It's from Republic Services and Marion County Environmental Services.
So is that an addition or a modification? Under which one do you have that?
On page? Yeah, but it's, we have, that's the revenue statement. And then B would be the public services. I don't have it online, so...
Yeah, it's, who wants to add?
Under, what is it?
Republic Services and Marion County Environmental Services.
That's the Republican services?
Yep.
Okay. Mary, any presentations or comments from the public? Anybody want to say something? Introduce yourself?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Chris, Westside Lady Security. We provide services here in town for some of the businesses. We just want to stop in and say hi to everybody, introduce ourselves. This is Chris, just one of my supervisors for the area. We just wanted to stop in and say hi to everybody. See how things are going here in the city.
Which businesses do you provide?
We're doing all the power, Yamaha, Chevrolet, Les Schwab over on that side right now.
Has it been much on the problem?
Yeah, quite a bit of issues out there. It seems to be that we deter quite a bit and we get people stopping on the highway. Some of the big things we're finding is there's people stopping on the highway and they're dropping people off trying to stage tire wheels, bury those trailers, and then they're trying to get them to come back. They're trying to outwit... Stealing tires from the dogs. A lot of them, they're trying to steal the recaps out of the trailer and then they take them to their businesses and resell them for non-recaps. So we can stop in that.
Thank you. Is there anything more? Okay, we'll go on to the staff reports.
Hi, Mayor. For the month of April, we had thirty-four calls for service. We generated a case number one way or another. We'll see on, well, let's see. Despite any traffic stops and violations, in my never-ending endeavor to hold people down through the city, I have at my disposal the ability to check out a unmarked Mustang, which I did this month. And so you'll see a little spike in there to help educate citizens.
Do they have the yellow license plate on? Do they have the yellow license plate?
They do, yes. We know where you live, right? So that's the spike there. All the rest of the calls for service are pretty much standard compared to last year also. I did, was contacted by a citizen who lives on East Main Street and has requested the speed trailer, radar trailer be placed around town again, especially on Hurst Street. And let's see, I did talk to the fire chief. Wanted me to pass on that June 4th, Saturday, from eleven thirty will be the safety fair. It has many public safety entities there. Big to do, so again, that's June 4th. And that's all I have. If there's any questions I can answer. I'll use my circle, use it myself if I may, Mayor.
Mary Lee?
The month of billing is, we were down a little bit on payments this month. The next month is right back up. You selected one on one collection count. So well reports, these standards, amount that we've been on, the difference we've seen every month. And we'll be on budget. We need to spend, yeah, I think.
And we'll come for the budget, huh?
Yes, yes. Gary Riker agreed to be the budget officer this year. Pete was, Gary Riker. Pete asked him to get one. He's on the budget meeting, he didn't do it this year.
Okay.
Nothing major, just we're going to be doing a volunteer resolution. Steve is going to help us with that and ordinance. The volunteer resolution has come up because our intern from Linden Bethany Community College will be done with school at the end of the month, the first part of June. We'd like to continue on and we'd also like to have him continue. He's been a big help. But since he's not in class, not going to school, we'll have to cover him under this volunteer resolution, so he's covered by workers comp. So that's why you have that before you proceed. And we'll go over the ordinance a little bit later on too. We'll talk about that. Nothing major, Rose is back and they're just ramping up for the summer. Got a little wood chips over for the exercise path at the church part. There was some concerns, so we're going to do a little work on the roots and get those spread out. And we have ISER, church group coming in volunteering to help with the chips and the painting of the backside of the workers building before we had that re-signed. That's about it.
Because a few times I've walked that path, those chips seem kind of coarse. Is there any way you can make some saws for them?
We could take a look at that. What it does is it just kind of deteriorates and dissipates after a while. You know, if you don't get anything inside, then, you know, it seems like it just kind of gets into the ground and goes away. We've, I think the last time we did this was three years ago with the wood chips. At that time, the county work group came out and helped us spread them around. And this time, ISER came up and the one that was putting it all together wanted a job that kids could do, you know, kids in their church group could help out. So we kind of are going to wait for about mid-June, they're going to do that.
Do you have a date yet on?
I believe it's, they have two dates, but they're leaning towards June 25th. But it could be the previous week, they haven't decided what that one. I think the previous week was the day before Father's Day and they were going to hope, and they didn't want to do the day before Father's Day, so probably didn't do it that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Steve, do you have anything?
I have a question for Alan. Are we making any progress on getting the entrance sign painted, the letters being painted?
Yeah, I'll break in. No, we're going to get the lighting on that better solar power light. But the guy who did the sign itself feels that the letters are adequate, it just needs more lighting.
Just to see them at night?
Yeah.
I received inquiry from the trustees of the Schumacher Trust about having the residents connected to the city's sewer system. I guess they give city water currently. And so anyways, they asked to see what, if there would be a process or if the city would be interested at all in hooking the house up to the sewer system. So the current ordinance says that we don't serve outside the city limits unless there is some type of, you know, basically an environmental reason to do so. And so I explained that to them and what the ordinance provided for. They still wanted to have just a general thought from the city on whether it was something that would be possible or not.
We do the water up there, they have the millage. They buy water from the city.
Yeah.
There's some residents up there at the top of the hill that have water and their own sewer. Everyone else is...
They have their own sewer.
Yeah, those are inside the city, yeah, another separate thing.
And the piece that they're talking about has city water, they just don't have sewer. Similar to the ones on the east side of Cassia Highway. They're on Simulink, but they have water.
This should be setting a precedent.
So is the line very far, like would it quite need to be this long?
I think, I think the depth of the line, they're going to have to do some work on their part because there's a basement in that house. They talked about making an easement down to the north on the east side of Berry Street to get the fall to get down to where it would, you know, tap into the line. That would be on their dime if you agree on it, home city. I know the city has stated, for what it's worth, if you're outside the city limits, they charge a double for sewer service.
And our ordinance says the same.
Okay.
So if we do, then the ordinance says we charge double the monthly rate. They would also have to pay a system development charge just as if any other new service was looking at it. Currently, the way the ordinance reads, it says we don't serve people outside the city unless there's, you know, a serious reason to do so.
So is there a chance that that property would ever be part of the city with that? Is there a chance in the future that the...
It's outside the urban growth boundary.
That's a long, long ways down.
So do you just want to vote on it or...
No, I don't want any votes. I just wanted to see if they were, anybody had any thoughts or ideas or consensus of some kind. I can get back to them and say that basically the city's not particularly interested. I mean, this is the sense I'm getting. City's not particularly interested, but maybe if they actually do have a problem that needs to be addressed, then we need to be made aware of that. They would have to come and let us know that this is a problem that they're having and that hooking up to the sewer is the best solution to that problem.
I think that is a good approach to speaking. So it is the Schumacher farm that's out to the east there?
Right.
So someone's living in there, correct? Someone's living in the property?
Yeah, somebody's... Okay, so I'll just report back to them. That's all I have. We got some ordinances and resolutions to talk about a little bit later.
We're going to get right into those.
Okay.
We're getting to resolution fifteen sixteen dash six, the volunteer resolution. Do you have a lot of stuff? Alan, did you want to elaborate on this thing?
Well, with the help of Steve, I guess the reason why we're doing this now where we hadn't done it in the past is the reason I stated earlier on. Ben Jones works for us currently, covered under LCC's Workers' Comp. And what he's trying to do is as he graduates, he still needs six months of service with the system to be able to take a Class One certification test. I mean, he'll have his associate's degree when he's done. But since he's doing so good for us, Rose has been helping out in the office from time to time. We have some other projects coming up, is why we, you know, we'd like for him to continue on. In the same breath, when the subdivision starts up over here, Jason and I will be pulled away from our job duties and then Ben will help us out do our day-to-day and stuff. So it's cheap in a way where we're going to have to pay slightly more for workers comp, if I understand right. But at this time, there's no wage. So that's the reason why I'm requesting this at this time. Steve, do you have anything to add?
You know, obviously I'm assuming somebody talked to the insurance guys and this was their recommendation.
Yeah, Madison and Davis read Bo Lindman. This is why they sent us a copy. And I don't know if you redid this or this is their copy.
He did some, this is where our resolution is set. And he just redoes the part.
Bo did?
Yeah, Bo did.
Okay.
So are there any questions? What are we going to call the revolution, resolution number? We have a number?
Uh-huh, it's one five one six dash six.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution fifteen sixteen dash six for volunteer work for the city.
Second?
Second.
And a little bit of second, then we approve. Resolution number one five one six dash six. Did they have to read anything else? All of you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I have a quick question, Steve. Is this going to be a press right away?
Yes.
So right on here today?
We want to follow up with Bo, right? He doesn't get passed.
Okay. Ordinance seven twenty-eight, establishing a regulatory review fee. Seven fees for type A. So I'm going to have the major permits.
So this came up in coordination with Alan and the city's engineer to try to make sure the city was having its costs for various development activity being covered so that as development occurred, that whoever was bringing that development would be actually covering all of the city's costs in doing so. So right now, we have the ordinance that covers the land use application process. But once that process is over, we don't have anything for the next phase as they actually start doing the work and Alan and the engineer and other people have to be reviewing stuff. So we want to try to get those costs reimbursed. So this ordinance, if you've got a chance to look at it, basically provides for a five percent regulatory review fee to be charged. So in essence, when someone came in for review, city would determine the value of that project and would charge a five percent fee to cover city costs.
And most paid up front?
You'd have to read it by the consent of the council. You could read it twice by title only if you wanted to be able to vote on it tonight to have it effective immediately.
Does anybody see any reason why we have to delay this to another meeting? I'll read it twice. An ordinance number seven twenty-eight. An ordinance authorizing the city to impose levy and collect fees for the cost of regulatory review by the city, its engineers, planners, attorneys, and other consultants as a result of development activity occurring within the city's sublimity and declaring an emergency. Once, I'll read it again. An ordinance authorizing the city to impose levy and collect fees for the cost of regulatory review by the city, its engineers, planners, attorneys, and other consultants as a result of development activity occurring within the city's sublimity and declaring an emergency. So should we have an entertaining motion to pass it? Are there any more questions?
I have. Alan, this is just, this does not cover the inspections and everything.
Well, this, there's different inspections. Like the inspections that we do plan for are for each individual lot. When they attach their water service, they do a pressure test there. Or the sewer lateral, they do a pressure test there. This will cover the costs that I guess we hadn't been getting reimbursed for in the past. We always have the pass through from Westlake engineer to the developer, but it's mine and Jason's time to do mandrel testing, you know, witness the mandrel air, vacuum testing, compaction tests on the streets. Just the, you know, on a project especially the size that's coming up, they're just, you know, the phone calls, the review of the plans and all that stuff. My time and Jason's time. Any time that we spent out there, we weren't being reimbursed for. So that's what that's for. We still have the separate ones for each individual homes will still be, what is it, our twenty-five dollars for water and fifty dollars for the sewer, whatever it is. That goes hand in hand with the SDC fees for agent and a lot. But this is the bigger picture.
So what, basically, who determines what is five percent? What amount is...
What they'll come in and they'll do a preliminary estimate, engineer estimate, and then it'll be verified by our city engineer. So at that time, when they submit the plans for review, they'll collect that fee at that time. And they'll give an estimation of what it's going to cost to do those improvements. I'm talking the subdivision, but it's for other improvements as well. They'll get an estimate on what it's going to do, you know, if they do a three or four lock of subdivision or any work.
So this is all part of the SDC?
SDCs are something separate. Those are for each individual lot owners. And the SDCs are for future growth improvements that are put in on the system, sewer system, water system, streets and parks, you know. So that might be something different than this.
What I'm trying to determine is where do we get the big amount that you're going to take five percent?
They give an estimate, estimate at the time they submit the plans.
Will this cover any new development or anything in the city?
This ordinance?
I mean, besides subdivisions or...
Correct.
And then the only other thing is, is this covers the time you're going to have to put in to do the individual plan review of every one of those structures as they're being built? Yes, no?
Right, right. That being, in essence, but it's a little different because each one of those plan reviews would be that individual property owner, homeowner within the subdivision.
But this would apply to that?
I guess, in a way, it would cover the cost because, you know, like I said, it's an estimate, estimated cost at the beginning of the project, so...
Well, the reason I'm asking that part is because of the development program. You have to look at every single house plan to make sure it has all those criterias.
Right.
I mean, you just can't, so...
Right. It's for plan review.
So if we back up a little bit, the, when the development went in, we collect five percent of that development cost, don't they?
Well, like he was saying, the land use part is different than this. We haven't had any plans submitted as of yet on that subdivision. So when that comes in, they'll give an estimated cost for those improvements that they're going to do to that. And then that's where you're going to get the five percent.
So each lot that would be improved upon, that would be five percent taken of that?
Isn't this for the infrastructure?
Right.
The infrastructure permanent?
Streets, water, sewer, those improvements there. So this first phase, there'll be actually three permits as this subdivision gets built. So if you call...
Oh, three permits, so there's...
Three separate phases.
So it would be phase one, those four will have a five percent...
Not those people, the developer. The developer will have that.
So if there's an empty lot in Sublimity and you want to build on it, that would be five, five percent for that?
That'd be different, that'd be the other class, it would be Class A. Then we can break that out, Class A, Class B?
There's not a breakout.
Yeah.
So you're just adding on to the SDC?
Well, it's important to understand the distinction because SDCs are set already in place by ordinances and they explain why we charge how much we do and what those monies can be spent for. And those are all about either reimbursing the city for costs we've already had for building the development or paying for future infrastructure. This is really just designed to get at reimbursing the city for cost of overseeing a project to make sure the project is built the way it's supposed to. So we've got our engineer out there checking things, Alan spending time checking things, all of that. The city's trying to get reimbursed for all of that kind of cost.
Okay. So does it go back? Do we, will we be collecting a five percent levy on our home that's being built on a vacant lot in Sublimity?
Well, right now, it comes down to looking at the definitions then. So development says, "Any addition, modification of a housing commercial or industrial use requiring construction, operation, modification, removal, or installation of an improvement." And then you look at improvement. An improvement is any new or modified fixture or capital improvement located on public or private property, or property dedicated to the public, and capable of being connected to city-owned or maintained storm, water, sanitary sewers, streets, lighting, rights of way, and/or water facilities. So really, that's pretty comprehensive. Anything that's going to be in any way connected or using the city facilities. So technically, it would apply to a house.
But it wouldn't be based on the value of the house itself, it would be based on the improvements to the system.
That's not, that's not the way I read it. You would have, we'd be charging five percent of whatever the cost of that residence in the plan review, because you're doing a plan review. Do I do that wrong or...
No, I mean, if we want to have a separate category for a house, then we can do it. We, I guess it's up to the council what you want to do because clearly it is different, somebody just building a house on an existing lot. There's nowhere near the amount of time, you're not hiring the engineer to look at the house plans. So if we want to make an exception, you know, we could add a line that says that this fee shall not be applied to the construction of single-family residences. We just take that out, for example, if we did want to impose that fee for residences.
We still have to, we still have to look at those plans.
The house plans?
Or charge a different fee.
Maybe that's what I, I guess we saw three different cities' ordinance, sample ordinances, and there was a different fee for the Class A and Class B. I guess, you know, I didn't look at that closely to see how they broke theirs out. It went by house to house. Our engineer recommended this, thinking of the subdivision at hand.
Well, I just know if you're going to have any work on one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and twenty-eight plans that you're going to be reviewing.
Right. Over the course of several years.
I mean, if we just make a flat fee for plan review, residential, you know, or commercial plan review as it's being built, I think, because that's going to take your time. You know, is it half hour, forty-five minutes, an hour to build through? Because you have those standards that you now have to look at because of the development. So Alan, just give us an example of, say, what from this housing project? What would we add to one of those houses out there? If we had five percent?
I don't know if the developer would then pass that on to each individual homeowner or property owner. What they figured, on the first phase, they figured, Westlake, this was a rough estimate of twenty-five thousand dollars... of twenty-five thousand dollars per lot to do the infrastructure. And five percent of that, based on the first phase, the city would collect seventy-five thousand. And then that would be going to pay the engineer and whatnot. Now, how he passes that on to the price of each individual lot as he sells the lots, then that would be, that would be up to him, but that would, that would, in essence, cover the city without going and doing monthly pass-through billing and whatnot, it would be a one-time fee upfront. And West Tech was surprised we didn't have this in place, because they said all the other cities that they work for have this ordinance, something similar, we had several sample ordinances.
Any more questions? No entertaining motion?
Can I, can I ask a question? Does that, does that money then go into, like, the general fund, or does that go to pay just the city planner and the people that are reviewing the thing as an extra? Is that a valid question, Steve?
Uh, well, I mean, I don't know the accounting side of it as far as for budgeting purposes, so I'm not sure we're going to say it's just a general fund item, because you're not going to be budgeting for this on a year-to-year basis, because you, a lot of years, you collect zero dollars, you know, the last ten years, we've collected zero dollars. So, it's not going to be part of our general fund in that sense. It's going to be an in-and-out item for the most part for third-party costs, so we get a separate bill from the engineer, or the planner, or whatever, they're going to be billing us, and then we're going to be using this money to pay those bills, just as we do now, already with the land use fees, you know, that we charge, and we pay those to those third parties. The part that is reimbursing the city for our own staff time, I suppose, you could say, well, that's going into the general fund, in the sense that it's, it's going to be supplementing the money that we have available to pay staff. Budgeting people would have to work out, I guess, the details of that. But before we, I guess, move on, maybe a suggestion would be that this, as you see this, section two could be modified a bit, so that it would say that regular inventory fee shall be as follows, and then subsection A would be five percent of the city's estimate of the development value for all projects that aren't otherwise described. And then subsection B could say for, for development which is one to four residential units, maybe we should just have a flat fee. So, for a house or duplex or whatever, we would just have a flat fee of some amount.
Yeah, so, we should put that in there before we make a motion, shouldn't we?
Yeah, I mean, that's why, so, when you make the motion, you could, you could say, you move to approve it as we've amended it tonight.
And what would the flat fee be, what, who?
Oh, if you're an hour's worth of work, you could do, you know, thirty dollars or something like that, I guess, to cover that. You know, with your example, you know, if you're talking about the house itself and five percent on that, that's fifteen thousand dollars that you'd, you'd permit these, so that's, that's where I figure that's not going to happen, so.
I'd say a one-time fee of fifty dollars. Is that would cover?
Maybe necessarily put in the ordinance what it is, because you can always do a resolution for the fees, and say, then that's a lot easier to change.
Oh, and just put it here, just to stand the fee?
Mm-hmm. And then you do a resolution that states what those fees are, otherwise we could be changing them.
Yeah.
Does it matter really?
Well, I mean, you know, we can adopt an ordinance any given time, just like we can adopt a resolution, so a lot of, a lot of cities do that, where they authorize any ordinance to pass resolutions for changing fees, because they find that easier. Doesn't operate as.
Yeah, hi, Michael Taylor, one one six one, Brooklyn, Roswell. I, I think it's a great idea, obviously, the city shouldn't be, of the general fund, paying Alan's wages while he's working there in the subdivision. I think it'd be important, from what I've seen initially, especially with development and with the development code and the city code, there being questions about the definitions, and there being inconsistencies in the code. Well, I think this is a great idea, and it should move forward, I think that it needs to be very detailed, so if it gets challenged, like, say, the developer comes in and says, "Well, really, it's just individual, there's some individual houses, so maybe couldn't we just pay the flat fee on the house rather than the development," that sort of thing, so, which is kind of what I've seen happening with this development. So, I think it'd be important to make sure that it's as detailed as possible, so when it is enacted, it can stand up to screw me by someone who wants to challenge it and challenge the fee.
Can I interrupt a little bit? You know, what, what I'm envisioning is, say, if a guy's got a three-bedroomed house, and he wants to stay out of the damn, another bedroom, but a master bath, he's not using the street anymore, he's not using the sewer anymore, but Alan's going to have to review the plans after he's done that, to make sure that he uses the same site and same location that goes up. It's development, but it's not impacted in any, in any way that is currently impacting it, so, I can say this is specific. Is there something we need to jump on tonight?
Well, I think we should probably put it in place tonight, if, if people are generally in agreement that we should have them, I think we could do it tonight by modifying this as we discussed, to make one category for one to four residential units, fifty dollars.
But what would that come under?
It'd be under two A, and then we would have a subsection there, and, and, you know, the favor will be revised accordingly, but, so it would provide for a regulatory review fee as follows, so, for all development, not otherwise sent forth herein, five percent of the city's estimate of the development's value. And then subsection B for one to four residential units, the sum of fifty dollars. So, those, that would be the additional language that we would insert into this paragraph.
Does that mean per unit, fifty dollars per unit, or?
Uh, no, I don't think so, I think it would just be fifty dollars for the development.
Please, please change that. Okay. You want to make a motion? I will make a motion that we accept ordinance number seven twenty-eight, authorizing the city to impose a levy and collection fees for the cost of regulatory, and the, for the city, its engineers, planners, attorneys, and other consultants, as a result of development activity occurring within the city of Sublimity, we're declaring an emergency. And with the additional language in section two, A and B. Please, right, everybody, see, is it turning?
There's second amendment? I'll second. And moving to second, if that, yeah, office, ordinance, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, the next one is a resolution fifteen sixteen dash seven, changing bank checks, signers, and authorization to accounts.
And this, we're using this to just update our, our information on our paid signers. Currently, these are the people, Mayor Bob Portage is a signer, and Carol Peter is a signer. I'd like to make a motion, pass resolution number fifteen sixteen dash seven, authorizing signers on the city bank account.
Do we have to read this twice? So, any questions or comments? It's pretty straightforward, entertaining motion, pass this resolution.
I'm going to make a motion to pass resolution fifteen sixteen dash seven, where the city of Sublimity City Council authorizing signers on the city bank account.
Second? I'll second it. Moving to second, to pass resolution fifteen sixteen dash seven, say aye?
Aye.
Move, move on to the other. Okay. Next item, item forty, utility buildings, building office.
What's that happened? Yeah, so, I don't have the information, we're still in the process of, of reviewing this, yeah. We got a little down to a couple, and, uh.
Who, Marion County Sheriff's Department of Public Services, we're, government agreement for sixteen seventeen, for the year sixteen seventeen, June, November?
Yes. It went up from a hundred and fifty-eight to, uh, ten thousand dollars, it's going up. Some of that was because of the sheriff's contract with the deputies, you know, working contract. There was an increase in the fleet and in communications through the nine-one-one center, the real cost. Other than that, the language or the intergovernmental agreement is still the same, and, no, no major, any other changes in the language or the setting.
Do we have to pass this now, or?
Yes.
Any other questions, or? There's still a guardian for that. Yes. Any other questions?
There's change in the, the?
No, there's no change in language. So, if there are no other questions, about it all, entertaining motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Sublimity and Marion County for sheriff's police services.
Second. And moving to second, then we approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Sublimity and Marion County, or our sheriff. Any other questions about it? All opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Just see if you're. Question, Ray?
This is the police contract that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Are there any rules or regulations that the city sets up with the Marion County? I mean, do they, do we just let them come in and do what they normally do, or is there, like, I'm trying to get across, certain rules that would apply to?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
To services in town?
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't, I think they're going to keep the law in order, that's, that's their basic deal, speed and criminal activity and everything else.
Okay.
It's another thing, it's not just stopping guardians that are going thirty-five to twenty-five mile an hour, don't eat, feed, serve warrants and everything else. Answer complaints.
You referring to, like, ordinance complaints and their?
Oh, well, I thought, well, speeding in, in school zones.
Yeah, well, he's, he's addressing that, and, and set up, uh, little deals, and he said that tonight, and, yeah, he's got the whole, the whole ball of wax, yes, to cover. He's got a fight in the home, he's the one that's going to go.
Mr. Van Ooyen, he did pick up some of the, the Sublimity schools on, here, for us.
Yeah, what?
They, he told someone over, I was waiting for my child to come out of school, and so many things buy pretty fast, and, uh, pulled him over. I didn't see him, but he, he pulled him over.
Are they twenty-four hours?
No. Actually, we have forty-hour week, and then we're covered by the people down here and Bill and Wood, what's his name?
Schumacher.
Schumacher Building. And the difference between their response time is only like, what, a minute or two?
Couple minutes.
Couple minutes.
And who is it in the, Schumacher Building?
That's where their substation is, where, Marion County.
Okay.
Do you have the contact information? Do you need the contact information?
Well, we do, there's the times that we've called for their responses, we know where they're coming from is Salem, or they're Inglewood, so many that come out, and a lot of the times, then my officers make it out of our vehicles before they do, and we don't really get to see them, we leave them, so that's what we were asking, about the hours were.
They've actually measured the response time, I can't, you know what it was, isn't it? It's, it's pretty low, like, a minute.
When the contract deputy is on, lots of the response times are thirty to forty-five seconds, or less. And when they're, when the contract deputy's not on, and it goes to county at large, because we get backfill, or they cover our calls, and it, it may add, if you looked at average times, just a couple more minutes, so, you know, some of these are five, but it also depends on the nature of the call, so.
One, one other question, for example, do they have set times for crosswalk inspections? Like, State used to come up here?
Yeah, I know.
With the bunch of, I, I, I have tried a cross in the crosswalk.
Yeah.
And people just smile at you.
I, I don't know, when I, when I want to go across, they, they stop.
You must have a different sign than I.
Well, I don't know, but I mean, I, you know, in fact, I, I don't even use a crosswalk to stop.
Well, just an example, one, one lane of traffic going north will stop, and there, it just happened just yesterday, a young girl in a car going south, she just smiled at me and just kept on going.
Yeah. I mean, State pull this stuff off, you know, maybe once every six months.
Yeah.
I don't know how much could they get in, there's all kind of, I mean, they're only, I can pass it on, put it at, in their traffic, got to watch for it. Yeah, it's, I, I agree with you, I mean, that's, it's a good thing to have them stop if you want. Okay, let's go to the expenditures.
The only one I got a question on is West Tech engineer, Alan.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea what that was for, or is it?
It should be called out on their invoices, as far as jobs. Some of them should be passed, or some of this should be plan review for passers. Some of it might be water rights, questions? Do you have a breakdown there, Joe?
This one just says city engineering.
Yeah, that one we're allowed to make a call on. There's no job number, job name?
Yeah. They've got a project up here that's two three nine nine, city of Sublimity, it stands.
That's, that one, yeah. I can call on that before we make a payment to see where it's directed. But if they didn't, if they didn't state a job number, that might be ours, it might be the water rights and the work that we've done on the subdivision.
Everything else is pretty little detailed out, now, and they're just?
Yeah, we, we've been working on water rates, remember when we talked about that? So, water rates, water rights. If they didn't put a job number or name on it, that's probably what it is, but I'll double-check on that.
So, the Schumacher water rates for forty-three fifty?
That was work I'd busted on that, as, you know, with Water Resources and, and I don't talk into too much detail at this point, we're still working on that, we don't know if that's a viable option still, but.
And it's the same folks that want to connect to the sewer?
Same, right, yes.
There's one other thing that I haven't put on yet, it's, uh, I don't remember what it's called, is it called something?
Web page.
Yeah, that, it's up for renewal. So, I talked to someone, they, she, for nine years, it's like a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, just like that. So, that one will be on there.
Sounds reasonable.
I'll make a motion that we pay the bills as presented for May of two thousand and sixteen.
Second. And moving to second, we pay the bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, April eleventh. Are there any corrections? additions to it?
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes of April eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, both the executive session and the regular meeting as presented.
Second. And moving to second, we approve the meeting minutes of May, April eleventh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next thing is the revenue statement. We're still taking in more than we've spent, huh? Very much as well. Then it's just an item. Unless there are any questions, we just, maybe we don't have to do anything about the week. Okay, uh, the addition to the information items was concerning the public services. Did you have something?
Yeah, I, uh, was contacted by the public services, um, met their new manager for this area. They asked a couple of questions, you know, about services and everything, you know, how things were going. Just wanted to check in with us. But one of the things they did hand out, and I think that was the basis of the whole meeting, is that, um, Marion County commissioners have passed a increase on dumping fees at the burner, for twenty dollars a ton. Anyhow, the commissioners are supposed to be coming out to each city to explain these costs and everything and that, but it's a rough estimate right now of three to four dollars a month increase on our garbage rates. So, but that's, you didn't have the whole breakout, Marion, and this is based on Marion County and the operation of the burner in Brooks. It's coming down the pipe, twenty dollars a ton. Yes.
Equates to three to four dollars a month bill.
Mm-hmm. How much is your average garbage can weigh?
Well, it's...
Is it a month?
Yeah, a month. Yeah.
How much is a month increase? It's about a buck a day, a month, a buck a week.
But this is, this, this cost, it increases because of the Marion County and their fees for dumping and their electricity rates and the operation of the burner.
So that's over ten percent. We currently pay fifty-two fifty every two months. And so they're gonna charge us an extra six to eight dollars per billings, huh?
That's, yeah, they're supposed to come and give us more information, but it's a heads-up that they're, you're gonna see an increase. But Marion County is supposed to be coming out to explain this whole plan. They haven't got the whole picture out yet, but they were, Republic Services is giving a heads-up that it's coming.
But that's a big step, increase for the, for the, no more than it's going up for them.
So I...
Yeah, don't you question?
Yeah, I, I, I asked the questions and they, they even danced around with three to four dollars. They said it could be more. I, they have to see what this whole impact will do on their, your operations, but they're looking at three to four dollars a month increase.
Well, they, well...
This isn't their, well, it's operating cost, but it's being driven because of the town.
Yeah. I don't know what to, I don't know what to explain. Under continuing business, uh, you know, we're still working on this hiring of a clerk and a city administrator and it's progressing, you know, we're, we're getting it down to where it's, uh, we're gonna have some answers. We wanna do it right and it's, but so far it's really ran smoother than I thought. But Jim has really done a lot of working on it, uh, and, uh, did you wanna say anything about it, Jim?
Um, I just have a couple of things that we wanna make noted. Kathleen's our girl set from Silverton.
Yeah.
And Tim Wood from, um, Kaiser, uh, both helped with the interviewing panel for the utility billing clerk. Um, and Kathleen is also helping in the office with our budgeting and with, um, helping Carol, uh, kinda work through some of the Cassell, um, problems or any issues come up, she's able to, she's our go-to person, which we really appreciate she's doing it free of charge, so, um, we gotta give Silverton a shout-out for that. So, um, that's, uh, that's going on. Next week, we're doing our interviews for the, our in-person interviews for the city of Venice.
So, you know, before they even made it, we may have some, some folks working. Okay, question, is there anything else?
On that, uh, since one time dropped out, are you picking up another one?
Yeah, well, uh, according to, what's her name, Jenny?
Jenny Dassler.
She, uh, you know, she kinda hedged on it. I read her email and she said you can or, you know, it's up to us. Uh, I, I don't, I don't care either way.
Well, currently, um, we have two, two good people.
Correct, yeah.
And, uh, you know, uh, I'm, I'm not in favor of adding the third right now. Because he was force, right?
The third would be there down in New York, it'd be a long ways to come.
Yeah. Uh, you know, we can't decide on one of these two. Maybe we can, I don't, I don't...
Well, I think most of us are, uh, I think Jenny Grease and Brian and Bob has said that he would be willing to, um, have the guy from New York come and, um, interview during that time, during that time.
As far as me, I don't care. We, we should have to reimburse him for something, you know? Well, really, really reimburse him?
There, there is reimbursement in that, yeah. I mean, I would at least entertain or let him entertain if he wants to come out and he can work with, you know, cover costs or, you know, reimbursement, at least part of it, yeah.
Were you thinking about covering some of his travel costs?
Well, if he gets a red-eye flight, maybe it's a little better.
Didn't we talk about percentage before?
We have. I mean, I would let Jim or Jenny, uh, from Cog get ahold of him to see if he's still interested in, in interviewing in person, if he is, you know, figure out, you know...
That might be a reasonable way to do it. Let's contact him, at least, and see if he's still interested. He might not be interested anymore. I don't know. Let's at least contact him and see where he's at.
Okay.
We'll go from there.
There you go.
Okay, I'll go on to the sewer committee report. I don't have anything. I mean, they've got a new, uh, do they have a new finance director down there?
They hired a contractor.
Huh?
They hired a contractor to help them through for budget.
Well, we're not gonna do anything with our meeting until they get all settled. Well, do you have anything in public works?
No, I'm pretty well covered with everything.
Gene?
The contract's been settled and nine-one-one, we haven't heard anything, so nothing.
Okay. Brian's gone and I don't have anything for him. Jim, you have anything for the school personnel?
I, I don't, other than what we've already talked about, the, the, uh, Joe didn't know what to tell you.
With all the business done before this meeting, we'll entertain a motion to close it. Make a motion to close it. Second. And moving to second, we close the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Take the votes.